Patient, we ran over time in the previous meeting. I'd like to welcome each of the committee members here tonight and our guests. And I'd like to advise you at this time that we have approximately three action items before the committee. I'd like to ask a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of June 1st, 2009.
So move.
Now, I'd like to introduce Vice Chancellor Peter Jordan. We'll now introduce Action Item 1B.
Thank you, Trustee Pacilli. Is this working?
Yes.
Yes. The Board does not generally review student government constitutions. In the case of the College of Staten Island and a few other campuses, however, the constitution of these, the student government constitution for these campuses are incorporated into the governance plan for the colleges. Amendments to governance plans require a vote by the Board of Trustees, and that is why these revisions, on behalf of the Student Government Association Constitution at the College of Staten Island, comes before this committee today. Amendments to the student constitution requires a referendum with a vote of at least 10 percent of the student body. Although the required 10 percent vote on the referendum to amend the constitution was not achieved, the college president, Dr. Tomas Morales, supports moving it forward here today. The voter turnout was significantly higher than the turnout when the 2,000 revisions were adopted. It was brought to our attention also that the quorum designation, as approved in the referendum, does not meet the open-meeting law. The revised document in your packet today reflects language that will make quorum compliant with the open-meetings law by removing the words "currently serving." The documents also highlight that the referendum changed the quorum from one-half to one-half plus one, but the underlining of the new language was inadvertently omitted from the original attachment. The changes on page three of the constitution, under the heading "Quorum," in item number four. At this point, I'm pleased to introduce President Tomas Morales to provide an overview of the changes and to answer any questions that the committee might have. President Morales.
Welcome, President Morales.
Madam Chair, Vice Chancellor, members of the Student Affairs Committee, Student Affairs and Special Programs Committee. I'm very proud of the proposed changes in the constitution. It actually predates my arrival to the College of Staten Island. And the reason why I'm very proud of it, this process has transcended three different governments. And so, one of the challenges in student affairs is student leadership succession. You know, clubs come and go, and they have a hard time with succession planning. And so, I'm very proud that our students at the College of Staten Island, my students, actually passed the baton through three governments. And even though we fell short of the required 10 percent, I really believe that indeed these proposed changes represent the will of the students. I'm particularly proud of the addition of a mission statement to their constitution that basically says to represent the needs and aspirations of all students of the College of Staten Island, to protect the rights and welfare of students at the College of Staten Island, to secure meaningful participation in academic policy and curriculum formation, and to engage all other activities necessary to represent students of the College of Staten Island. I think an added dimension of these constitutional changes is a bylaw revision that's occurring, discussions that are occurring at the College of Staten Island, that we hope will increase the number of students who sit on college council committees. We see this as a classroom, we see this as leadership development. This is a very important part of the collegiate experience at CUNY and, of course, at the College of Staten Island. We're going to increase the number from 20 to 25 members, so we're expanding student leadership. We're going to, the students are recommending a provision to hold special elections, not one just special election, but in the event that the president or vice president is no longer able to continue, the vote will come from the Senate, though the significant change in the constitution is to now open up the election of the president and vice president to a campus-wide electoral process. And that in itself, I believe, will increase interest and increase the number of students who participate in student government. There's a revision in the absentee policy, which I think is very fair, but it also allows for students to be absent when they're attending college council committees. So, we're really trying to increase the number of students who are at the table. Of course, Vice Chancellor spoke already about the quorum. There will be an increase in our commissions, and in fact, there will be a new commission called the Commission on Disabled Students and Veteran Affairs. I'm particularly proud of that aspect, and we're really working very hard with our Office of Disability Services to assure that our students who happen to be physically challenged or learning disabled are served and are included in student government. And so, I think these are really very progressive, natural evolution of the student government. There's an office hours provision, there are transition documents that are all incorporated in these changes.
Thank you very much, President Morales. Are there any questions?
Yes. I think, you know, from what I can see in terms of the revised constitution, I mean, it looks good, there are a number of excellent principles that are in place. My question concerns the participation to vote on it, and so, my understanding is that there was not, the 10 percent of the student body did not participate, and about 5 percent did. However, your confidence in this is increased because the student government is the one that proposed the changes, is that what you're saying?
The 5 percent is actually an increase, historical increase at CSI, as low as that is. Of course, the national average is about 10 to 12 percent at public institutions. What I'm particularly, what I believe mitigates the low turnout, I think the 10 percent threshold is a good policy, is in fact that the proposed changes actually survived, that may be a poor descriptor, of changes of student government. It actually went, and three student governments worked on this, and ultimately, it's being brought to you as a committee, brought to this committee after really extensive deliberation and discussion, not only among students, but students and student affairs educators.
Yeah. My concern nonetheless, even though, and I think it's good that you cite national figures around participation, my concern is that the student body overall understands the changes, you know, given that this is a good constitution, and therefore that there is a way to communicate afterwards some of the things that are coming out of this, so that people are informed about this, and also that there's a way to use that informative process as a way to galvanize people and get them more involved and committed, or at least get ownership by virtue of the fact that they now have knowledge that there, you know, that there are other things that can happen. I mean, and so, you know, I mean, I will vote for this because I think it's good, but I don't think that we should rest in our laurels, you know, and I think, Vice Chancellor, that we need to do whatever we can to continue to make sure that students understand exactly what is happening and that they understand this constitution, you know, because if it just sits and only the student, what happens, you know, having been a student leader myself, you know, what happens many times is that the student leaders, they will, they keep this small bit of knowledge, you know, within the small group, and so, nobody ever knows exactly what's happening. Nobody ever is involved, nobody knows what's going on. We shouldn't stand for that at all, we need more increased participation, and so, I'd like to see other efforts that would take place that would get that going.
Let me comment, Trustee Barry, you're so right, that we have to work harder to engage our students, and I am very pleased to share with this committee that our newly appointed Vice President for Student Affairs, Dr. Gerald Wolfrock, is really hands-on, personally involved. We're going to help the student government develop a website with blog capability, so that we can solicit students. I think students, the student government at CSI understands the need to go out and survey students and to really take the pulse of the typical CSI Jane and Joe, to assess what they need, and then to work together to deliver for the students.
Yeah, I think it's good. The last statement that I would make on it, Chairperson Pacilli, is that we need to ensure that our student cadre in every university is strong, and that there's strong participation. I know that you're committed to this, in fact, I do understand this. This is not, you know, a statement that's directed at all at you, because I understand where your heart is and also your behavior since you've been there, and it's commendable.
Thank you.
You know, but, you know, just to send a message that throughout, that we need to ensure that student leaders are strong throughout, because if we don't have student leaders strong throughout, then there's no reason for this, for us to be here deliberating.
Thank you.
If I may make a statement, I mean, I'm on that campus for many, many years, and I must say that it's a wonderful idea that President Morales is incorporating greater diversity for the students, and I'm a strong proponent of that. But I must also stipulate that the students at the College of Staten Island are quite vocal, and although it's a small campus, they don't keep the information within the student government walls to themselves. It's articulated, I've seen them in classrooms conversing with students, encouraging them to participate in student government, and as a former student government president at the old Staten Island Community College, I can tell you, students today are far better than when I was attending. They will tell you immediately whether you're withholding information, whether you're denying them opportunities. So, I commend them, and I think it's just wonderful, President Morales, that you're incorporating this and changing the bylaws.
Well, I'd like to invite you to Pizza with the President. We have our first meeting with-
How about yogurt?
With pepperoni?
We will have our first roundtable discussion with student leaders, we've dubbed it Pizza with the President. We're going to try to really get the newly-elected president to join, to co-host with me, and we'll call it Pizza with the Presidents, so that we can engage students. I agree with you, Trustee Barry and Trustee Pacilli, that we really have to work harder to engage our students. You know, the persistence literature, and the Chancellor was mentioning earlier, that our retention efforts are spiking, but it's all about a sense of belonging. Students who feel that they belong to the institution beyond simply going to class persist at higher rates. Students who are employed on the campus persist at higher rates. That crosses racial lines, socioeconomic status lines, and so, we just need to work, continue to work at it. And I think, I'm very proud of the student affairs professionals, not just at CSI, but throughout the university, and I think everyone's committed to that end. Thank you.
If I may, from the student, central student affairs perspective, in response to your thoughts, Trustee Barry, I just would like to point out that the work of the CUNY Leadership Academy is all directed in the direction that you spoke to, so I'm really pleased to say that we are on the same page, and under my leadership, we'll continue to push the envelope on that agenda as well.
Thank you.
May I ask you to introduce Action Item 1C, please?
Do you want to vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Now, would you like to proceed with that?
I do.
Oh, gosh. Okay. All those in favor? It's been a long day for us.
Aye.
Any dissensions? So moved.
No.
Proceed.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Queens College request to the Board of Trustees. Queens College is requesting an increase of $15 to be paid by all students for the student union portion of the student activities fee. Under a longstanding agreement between Queens College Student Services Corporation and the Board of Trustees, the student union fee is not subject to student referendum procedures. The fee increase received a unanimous vote of the student union board and is strongly supported by the college's president and student leadership. The student union fee has not been increased since 1983, but President Myskins and Jennifer Jarvis from Queens College are here this evening, and I'd like to ask them, along with any student leaders, if they would answer any questions on behalf of the college. President Myskins, Jennifer Jarvis.
Do you want us to respond to questions, or do you want us to?
Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, Chancellor Goldstein, Vice Chancellor Jordan, thank you for this opportunity. You probably know that the student union at Queens College, certainly you know that, Trustee Barry, is a very special place.
I was one of the founding members of that.
You were one of the founding, and so, it's had a special arrangement for how it is funded, and as you heard from Vice Chancellor Jordan, we have not had an increase since 1983. One never wants to raise a fee if one doesn't have to. However, we find for operating this facility, we're in a deficit, and we want to try to deal with that straightforwardly. I was very proud of our board, as you heard from the presentation, they voted unanimously for it, and I'd actually like to ask Daniel Munchak, our student president, student body president, to come forward as well at the table, if he may, because he's been a real champion in doing this. It's not something a student government leader likes to do, it's like raising taxes by a politician, but he's been courageous in that, and it will certainly make a difference for us at the college to have the student union solvent. It is the center of student activity. Student activity at the college has increased dramatically in recent years, and especially now with our 500 students living 24/7 on the campus, we need this to be very active. So, this is why we're here before you. Jennifer, did you want to say anything more?
No, I'm here to address any questions.
She's head of our, director of our student life on campus. Daniel, I'll bet you'd like to say something.
Yeah, well, I think you said it well, President Myskins. As a student leader, I'm conflicted. On the one hand, you know, as a member of the Board of Directors, it's our responsibility to, you know, ensure that the student union doesn't, you know, get, doesn't continue in this financial crisis which it's in. On the other hand, as a student leader, you know, we don't want to see fees continue to go up for students, and on top of the tuition hike, on top of one of the highest activity fee. So, at the same time, you know, we present this here today for the Board's approval.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much, Daniel. Are there any questions?
I certainly understand the need for a functioning student center that's not in debt, but I also want to point out that Queens has, or has usually had, the highest student activities fee of any campus in CUNY by a significant amount of money. And, you know, that's a problem, and it always has been a problem. When SEEK pays the student activities fee for Queens College SEEK, it's double what we're paying for most of the other colleges, so that I wonder whether there should be some look at why it's so much higher than everybody else's activity fee. I certainly understand the students', but maybe something has to give at some point instead of keeping, raising it up, because it really is high.
I mean, we believe that how the money is spent should be transparent, the students should know where that money is going to, the Board of Directors should, you know, should see, and the committees should be empowered as far as how that money is spent.
I'm not saying it's not transparent, I'm saying it's very transparent, it's listed very clearly here, that's not the problem. Problem is, it's a lot compared to other branches, and so, it should be in part of the consideration.
Do the-
The Residence Hall now, that is a very defining moment in the history of Queens College, and I would think that the president, when he sent the letter to me asking for support of this, and then I voted to the Board of Trustees, I was very mindful that with the new Residence Hall, things would have to change in a very dramatic way, and there may be an opportunity for we to do yet another Residence Hall at Queens College, which if we can put the economics together, I think would be a good thing to do. So, I think one needs to understand how the college is evolving, and I think the Residence Hall is probably the most important driver that one would look at to justify the support of this.
Yeah, it seems, it seems, it seems to me that, I mean, I commend you, Daniel, as a student leader, for supporting, you know, an increase which you feel is warranted because you've had the information, and I'm just hoping that other students also are able to have full transparency on the range of issues and the range of initiatives, you know, that are being implemented at Queens College, so that way they can understand. I mean, for, you know, a fee now to come, I mean, if I'm sitting there as a student, I'm wondering, well, it hasn't been since 1983, why do we need to do it now? You know, and so, it just seems that there's an education effort that's needed, you know, and that people need to. Do you feel that students have this information? Do they, I mean, because you voted on it as part of the student government group, I mean, do other students understand why this might be needed?
I'd say the vast majority of them don't have the information, they don't have it now. I think the information needs to get out there, because students need to understand why this was necessary, the student union's really headed into a lot of trouble, they were looking, they have a deficit, and I think it's important that students really understand this, so we're going to try to get that information out there, and any assistance the university can provide and the college can provide, it would be very helpful for everybody.
Yeah, because I think that that way people can support an effort if they understand exactly what's happening and all of the things in addition to the Residence Hall, other things that are happening. I mean, we want to treat people as adult business leaders, you know, and so, they should just understand the cost, so I'm just hoping that from, what about from the standpoint of student life, do you see an effort like that that might be coming about?
I believe that we have all intention of educating our student population, that was one of the conversations that I had with Amanda Parnt to this meeting, that it will be a joint venture, that when it's time for us to explain this to the students, that it would be a full disclosure. The other thing that's coming along with the student fee is that we're not just increasing the student fee, but we have also asked the college to also assist with the expenses from the student union. And to me, that's important, because it shows that there's a commitment from the college, and not just saying, students, this is your building and you have to pay for it, but there's a full commitment. So, there's also going to be the opportunity for Queens College to give in, we've also asked for CUNY to financially support as well as the students. So, the intent is to sit down, to do a full education, and we also look at this as a great opportunity to explain to our students the services that the student union has to offer. For those students that did not know, this will be an opportunity for them to say, well, I'm paying $15, why? I now get an opportunity to say, you're paying $15, and this is what you get for your $15, plus more. So, I'm looking at this as a great opportunity, not just an opportunity to put our budget back into place, but an opportunity for us to really shine and to educate our students and what it is that the student union has to offer.
That would be good, I mean, I think it's a chance to revitalize and even get more involvement. I mean, I know that President Myskins said that there's good in participation, and every time I'm there, I think that that's probably the case, but I don't know if we could get even more participation than we have.
My question would be, how do you articulate the fees to the students? Is it on the first day of class?
Currently, it's in the bulletin, we also discussed it shortly during orientation, and it's also been discussed recently in our student newspaper, not this academic year, but last academic year, because for our student fee structure, we're quite different than some of the other campuses. It's always noted that we're more expensive. One of the things that the students do when they come to Queens College is, one, want to know why we're more expensive, two, want to know what part of their fee that they can collect back. So, as soon as they start their classes, that's one of the first things that we do, is we do educate them, this part of your fee is reimbursed, you can be refunded, this part of your fee, this part is not, and here are some of the different activities that you can participate because you do pay this fee.
Yeah, because I think it's important, because there's always that impression that it's Daniel's group that is instituting the increase, and that is, you know, that is untrue. And I must say, at the College of Staten Island, every semester, someone from student government does go into each classroom and say, okay, guys, you know, you're sitting here with computers, you're doing this, this is why you're paying this amount of money. And so, I think that's very important. So, if you can do it jointly, it's not coming from the students, and it's not falling on the shoulders of student, you know, student affairs. So, I think that's very key at this point.
We probably at this point need to expand it beyond our orientation program, but again, we can sit down and have those conversations, and also look to see what our sister institutions are doing.
Always for collectively communicating.
Teamwork.
Any questions, any further questions? If none, may I have a motion to approve?
So move.
All those in favor?
Second.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any dissensions? So moved, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chancellor Jordan, can you give us an update now on the events of student affairs?
Gladly, Trustee Pacilli. I'd like to mention three things that my office has been engaged with, or is currently engaged with. The first is that I came on board in the Vice Chancellor's office, this is day 11 for me, but who's counting? And I guess I can best characterize that experience as baptism by fire. Last week, I presented with colleagues and students before a joint New York City Council hearing, a hearing that was put together by the Higher Education Committee and the Veterans Committee, and here I am today, before the Board of Trustees, Student Affairs Committee, week three and counting. The hearing with the city council focused on the disbursement of veterans' benefits to student veterans across CUNY. As you may know, the Veterans Affairs has had some challenges in terms of distributing dispersments to students, student veterans, to cover their tuition and living expenses. The Veterans Affairs Committee and the Higher Education Committee of the New York- The Veterans Affairs Committee and the Higher Education Committee of the New York City Council wanted to know how CUNY students were being impacted by the delay in the disbursement of these funds. We were happy to report that CUNY students, CUNY student veterans, are not being negatively impacted by this low disbursement of these funds, because campuses within the university are making arrangements with students to defer their tuition payments until, until these dispersments can be taken care of and distributed. What we cannot account for, however, is that portion of any student's disbursement that covers, that covers the student's living expenses. And so we made it clear to both committees of the City Council that it was really important for them to continue to work with the Mayor's Office of Veterans Affairs and the VA to expedite this process in terms of dispersing student tuition benefits and living allowances. One of the things that was really impressive, I thought, was the makeup of the panel that we brought to City Hall a week ago, last Tuesday, actually. That hearing panel was made up of employees of the university, present with me was our Veterans Affairs Coordinator, Wilfred Koto. We also had the coordinator of Veterans Services at BMCC. We had a student veteran from Ostos Community College, as well as a student veteran from City College, and myself as the leader of that panel. It was an impressive presentation, and I was proud to be a part of it. The second item I'd like to mention to this committee of the board has to do with the USS Steering Committee elections. We have had two plenary sessions to elect Steering Committee members to, to USS, the University's Student Senate, and after those two plenary sessions, we are still without a chair, a USS chair, as well as three other Steering Committee positions. There is a third plenary session schedule for this coming Sunday, where we hope to, to elect and fill those final four positions. Our strategy is to get the vote out, as it were, by reaching out to Vice Presidents of Student Affairs on the campuses to make sure that we have a full complement of delegates seated at that plenary session, so that we can get the twenty-four votes needed to elect the remaining officers for the Steering Committee. And finally, I wanted to, to point out that in my three weeks in office so far, I have been working on conducting an assessment of sorts of the Student Affairs Division centrally, and I'm pleased to report that that assessment is going well. It has met with collaboration from staff as well as the Chancellery, and I want to thank everyone, including college presidents and members of, and members of Student Affairs Committees, of COPs, as well as the Board of Trustees, for your ongoing support. I look forward to sharing more with you about, about the outcomes of that assessment, and looking forward to your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Chancellor Jordan. It was a very good report, and we welcome the opportunity to work with you. Are there any questions? Yes.
No, you first.
Professor Bell?
Welcome, Vice Chancellor. I listened with interest at the veterans. I think this year, among any other year we've had, our veterans are in much worse shape than ever before, and I've had student after student who are not being served by the VA properly, and their benefits haven't been extended and they should be, their funds haven't gone through, they're in danger of being evicted, their medical benefits have been cut off. So the university, and I'm, I know the staffs on each of the campuses have tried to protect the students as much as possible. I think we very much have to communicate the thing, that these young people who serve us are really not being treated well. And I can think of at least two students who have been in my office almost every day since the semester has started, with one sad tale after the other of how they're getting the runaround and that, just what terrible things they have, so that I hope that you'll continue to communicate to Councilman Barron and his committee that they really do need to move very quickly with the VA. Not that CUNY isn't doing its job, but that the feds are not doing what they're supposed to be doing for these people. Very upsetting to watch what's happening to them when they return to school.
Don't we have some, someone who's heading up Veterans Affairs?
Yeah, we have, and I've spent my financial laid office, Paul Rosa, everybody imaginable has tried to straighten out at least one of these young people. And if I'm on it all the time, you know that somebody's advocating for this kid, but imagine what would happen if no one were advocating for him. And, you know, this is somebody who was in the front lines two terms with the Marines, front guard, and they cut off all his benefits and all his tuitions and no medical care. And, and what their solution was, a student has a three-point-six GPA, has six credits left to go, they told him to drop out.
This is coming from the federal VA?
Federal government, they recommended he drop out.
Well, it's, it's, it's not, it's...
It's not what we're doing, you know, we won't let him, but it's, it's appalling. I can't tell you what's going on.
Well, some things don't change, and I'm going to say that, because when I was a student, the returning Vietnam vets were given such a runaround.
Yeah, that's my era too, and I don't want to see it happen to this era of young people. I mean, exactly what, in our generation, it was a terrible thing, and we don't want to see that repeated. And as more and more of these young people come back and want to reassume their places at the university, we want to make it the smoothest possible for them.
And we will continue to push with the City Council's Committee on Veterans Affairs. As we left that hearing last week, Chairman Saunders committed to reaching out to the Mayor's Office on Veterans Affairs and the VA, because they weren't present at that hearing, and he was committed to getting to the bottom of the backlog and this service issue.
We can always call on Professor Bell and myself. We come from that era, will we take no for an answer? We'll take it for an answer. Trustee Barry?
Yeah, I was just...
No, I haven't either.
I was just, Vice Chancellor Jordan, thank you very much for your report. I just want to make sure I understand one aspect of it. We do not have a USS student president now, or is that what you were saying?
That's, that's correct.
So I guess it's something, what's happening, or what's, what's the forward action to get somebody? What's, what's going on?
As I...
Yeah, yeah. Why don't we have?
As, as I mentioned, yeah, it is disappointing. As I mentioned, it is our, our intention to make sure that at the next plenary session, which takes place on this coming Sunday, that we have a full complement of delegates representing the campuses. One of the challenges that we've had has been an attendance issue, where we haven't had a full seating of delegates, and so I've pledged to Vice Presidents of Student Affairs that if we have to start a busing program to get delegates to the meeting, that we will do that. And so we're working to make sure that all forty-six delegates are seated, as opposed to twenty-eight or twenty-nine, as we've been having at, at the last two plenary sessions. But this is, this is one of those places where, Trustee Barry, as you talked about the importance of developing student leaders, that, that we have some work to do as well, and, and I've made it part of my focus to, to work with USS closely, but also with our student, CUNY Leadership Academy, and with the Creative Arts Team that is here within the university, to really help mobilize and motivate our USS leadership and student government leadership across the university.
What is, is it a geographic problem? Where do, where do you meet? In Manhattan on a Sunday morning, or?
Well, the meeting is usually around midday, and the meetings move from campus to campus. This coming, this coming week, I think we'll be meeting at John Jay. We, we met at BMCC as well in the past, but the meetings move from campus to campus. I do have some ideas, and I'm exploring with Vice Chancellor Dobrin and Vice Chancellor Hershenson, some possibilities in terms of getting perhaps a more, a singular, more central venue for regular meetings of USS.
Because that, that might ameliorate some of the logistics for coming to meetings.
Absolutely.
Because it's important that, I mean, I was the strong proponent for the Leadership Academy. No one wants to see that succeed more than I, and if you can't get enough students to come out on a Sunday to meet, maybe the day has to be changed.
Well, these are things that we are looking into. The leadership, the CUNY Leadership Academy is doing some wonderful work. This is one of the, a focus on the development of USS and student government leadership around the university is one of the things I want to put on, on their plate as, as well going forward.
I just, I don't know what the reasons are for this, it's, it's very concerning to me that we haven't been able to, to get a president for USS elected, and, you know, so there, we need to find out all of the reasons, whether it's timing, or location, or something else, you know, that is preventing people from participating. My sense is that is something else, you know, because if you have, you know, the, the desire in place, that can overcome days and that can overcome location, so, so, you know, I think that, that we have some work to do to, to ensure that we get the right type of leadership and, and that we get people recommitted, you know, and re-involved, and by any means that we, that we're able to do that, you know.
Absol- absolutely. I will say that one of the other reasons why this is, is important, that is the election of USS chairs, because as you know, the USS chair is also serving as a member of the board as well, and we have a board meeting coming up. The good news is that there is a provision for seating an elected member currently, the Legislative Chair. Should we not elect a chair of USS, the Legislative Chair then is seated as the student trustee, and that position has been filled.
Is that part of the bylaw?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good, very good.
Thank you.
Any further questions of Vice Chancellor Jordan?
No.
Then I'll ask for the German of the meeting. Oh, wait, Professor Bell?
Motion.
They have a motion, please? Do we adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all, this was a wonderful first meeting for Vice Chancellor Jordan.
Thank you all.
You're done good.